Before we start, I'd like to remind everyone in here, if you came to speak during the public session, Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. And this is the meeting, this particular meeting is where we actually vote on items of interest to the people of Forsyth County. Citizens who are interested in anticipating or participating in the public portion of the meeting, especially those who are watching on Channel 13, are invited to call this number, 336-422-1200. Now I'll repeat that number, it's 336-422-1200. You'll be placed on hold until the public session begins, which will take place probably within the next half hour. Members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session, if you haven't already, you can pick up a card in the lobby, give it to Ashley Slope, who is to my right, all the way over there, she's wearing a blue mask, and she will have that information when we get into the public session. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation from Brother Richard Green of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ted Kaplan, please stand if you can.
Our beloved Father in Heaven, we approach Thee in prayer at this hour, as we are met here in this chamber, to conduct the business of this great county. We are grateful, Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy, that allow us to self-govern, and to be together and be able to do those things that are important and vital to the success of our community. We ask Thee, Heavenly Father, that Thou would bless us with Thy Spirit this day, and strengthen us in our deliberations, particularly our elected officials, to help them to consider the matters, and to be inspired and use wisdom and enlightenment as they make important decisions that impact the citizens of this great county. We are grateful for their service, grateful for the opportunity that we have as citizens to support them, and for their willingness to serve, and to give of their time and talents to serve this county. We are mindful this day, Father, of those who have been impacted by the pandemic, and we pray, Father, for them, pray for those who have lost loved ones, as well as those who are continuing to be impacted. We pray that they will be blessed and strengthened, and we are grateful for our medical brothers and sisters, and first responders who serve and do so much for us, we pray for them. And particularly, Father, with this day, we pray for the citizens of this great county, to bless and strengthen them, help them to be wise, and to strive to be diligent in the things that they can do, to impact their community, to make it a better place, and to be able to teach their families and those around them to live in such a way that we can have harmony and peace and love within this community, that we can reach out and strive to be one, and strive to live in harmony together. We are grateful, Heavenly Father, for Thy bounteous blessings upon us, and we give thanks for all these things, and pray for Thy Spirit now to be with us, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
One of the things the Commissioners are grateful for, that we are happy to announce that Ted Kaplan has just returned from a trip to Canada, our neighbors to the north, and good to have you back, sir?
Alaska.
Alaska, what did I say?
Canada.
Well, that's close. That's a great way to start the meeting, all of a sudden Canada's part of the United States. Oh, Lord have mercy, take care of David. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Kimberly Gardner, zoning docket 1603, and set forth in Agenda Item Number 1. And Mr. King, I guess you're ready to do that, right?
Mr. Chairman, if we can, I know it slips by because it's this thing that jumps in front of us on the agenda, but we do have Dr. Christopher Oll on the line to do a COVID update, and he's got some other things I know he needs to do.
I'll tell you what, let's go back and start all over. Dr. Oll, if you're available, we're ready to hear all the good news and the bad news, and tell us what we need to do during this pandemic. You're on from Wake Forest.
Yeah, I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you very well.
Very, very, very good, so yeah, it's been a, I'd love to see it's been a quiet week in Forsyth County, but we're kind of tagging along with the rest of the country right now. And then lots of discussion going on with COVID right now. Some of it, you kind of have to take in context, some of it, yeah, we need more information to know exactly what it means. Some of it we know for sure, our cases are going up, they're going up across the country. I happen to have a very close friend and colleague in Springfield, Missouri, and for those of you following the maps, that's pretty much the epicenter in the country, and so I get information from him as to what's going on. It's very real in those places where the percent of vaccinated people is low. They have a 400-bed hospital, they have about 180 people with COVID, so that's almost 1 in 2 in their hospital has COVID. And they had to build a new ICU outside of their building to fill those patients. So there, it's bad, their case rate's about, probably estimating about 300 per 100,000 per day. Here in Forsyth County, we're doing a lot better than that, but our cases are going up, so our rate today goes roughly at about 12 per 100,000 per day, and our percent positives, about 6%, and both of those are increasing. So you know, the big news this week, when the CDC talked about whether you needed to mask or unmask when going into public places, they said, figure out what your county's transmission is for your community, and whether it's substantial or high, then you should be thinking about masking when you go indoors, indoors, I'll emphasize that, to public places where you think there's a lot of unvaccinated people. So where are we at in our county, well, if you look at the official map, we're considered substantial. To be substantial, you have to be either 10% positives, I just told you we're at 6, so we got some room there, or you're between 50 to 100,000 cases per day over a seven-day area, 50 per 100, I'm sorry, per day, for a seven-day rolling average, well, we're at about 55. So we're kind of just inching into the substantial range, but given the fact that that's going up, I would say next week, I would be ready to put the stamp of substantial on the case numbers in our county. The other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, everyone's blaming the Delta variant, the Delta variant may be the turbocharger on the engine, but the engine really is the unvaccinated cohort of people. And I don't say that with the pointed finger, blaming, that's just the way it is. And the virus takes advantage of people who aren't vaccinated. And the other thing that's been a bit of a, is that you remember in May, we all took our masks off, we were all happy to do it, and we basically went back to doing things like pre-pandemic, and that's contributed too. And so even if it wasn't for Delta, I think our cases would still be going up now. So there's a few things going on right now that intersect with our cases going up. One is that we're having more people admitted to our hospitals, and I could give you some phenomenally high number of how much percent increase it's been, it's like a thousand percent increase over the last three weeks. But that means going from a very, very, very low number to a modest number. So we're not in any danger of getting overrun, and our ICUs are doing fine, and we're not in any danger of changing the way we're doing business. And I think, I don't think we will get to that. I think the days of really, really, really stressed-out hospitals in our region are probably behind us. The other intersection, though, is that our schools are reopening here in a couple, three weeks. And, you know, during the pandemic, for those schools that opened, and they were masked, and they had other mitigation strategies, transmission in schools was really, really unusual. And Duke's got really good data to prove that. I'm a little, I was a little afraid, though, that if we started school unmasked for our kids, that COVID would take advantage of that, and would start to take advantage of that in the school environment. And that's not the way to start out your school year, you want your school year to start out good, and you want it to start out with kids in class, you want it to start out with them learning, having fun, making friends, and having social enjoyments. And the way to do that right now, with our Delta's increasing like it is, is just to wear a mask. And so I applaud the school board's decision last night, and thank you for input from the Forsyth County Health Department and other sources for helping them through that difficult decision. I do believe it was the right one. So the question comes up, now, what about other public venues, and should people be wearing masks? And it kind of comes down to, what's your vaccinated proportion of population? What's the risk of transmission in that environment? And how much COVID do you have in your community? Right now, we have a modest amount of COVID in our community, it'll be in the, really in the substantial realm by next week. What's the risk of transmission in the environment, we have to look at that. Closed, unventilated spaces, and places where people are in close proximity, waiting rooms, for instance, in social services, waiting rooms in other areas, packed supermarkets, those are the places where transmission's going to occur readily. And then lastly, is the vaccinated proportion of the population. Right now in Forsyth County, over 12, we're at 53%, although hopefully with some of our recent mandates in healthcare and other areas, that will get up above 60 in the next two to three to four weeks. So with that, when you're considering county public spaces, I would probably recommend, not probably, I would recommend that at this point, that you tell people to put masks on when they come in the building. Outdoors, you don't need it, standing in line outdoors, it's fine. And any outdoor, social activities, it's fine, you don't need it. But when you're going inside, in areas where you don't really know the vaccination status and such as the people around you, you really should be putting a mask on right now, and that's not only to protect you, but to protect other people. And so I would encourage you guys to think about that for your public buildings right now. How long will all this last, you know, I really think that it's not going to be a hugely long time. There's interesting information out of England right now, who've been having a devil of a time with COVID since basically one June, so they were a month ahead of us with Delta. We started going up one July, and their rates are really coming down fairly quickly now, and they're not a lot different from us. So I'm guessing that probably by the time we get close to mid-October, thinking about Halloween, by the way, that hopefully this Delta wave will be behind us, and when the transmission in the community comes down again, we just take the mask back off. So you know, it's really a small pittance to mask, to do what you want to do. So rather than closing, you know, restaurants, shutting down places of business, you know, really putting the crimps on the fitness centers, and doing all these things, rather than doing that, let's just put a mask on when we go in. And I think it's a small, small thing to be able to continue to do what we want to do. So with that, I guess I can open it up for questions.
Any questions for Dr. Oll?
Unless you have a form for us for doing that.
Okay, comments or questions? I have a question, this afternoon, one of our district court judges, Lisa Menefee, is going to retire, and they're having a reception for at 5:00, and we're all going to try to get there, but the question is, with the governor speaking sometime, I think it's 3:00 this afternoon, with the latest guidelines, what are your, I mean, people are saying now, well, I've had my shot, I don't really need to wear a mask because I think that we're pretty much over the hill, but I've heard, based on what you just said, and I've heard some people say as well, this coming weekend, or whatever time of week it's going to be, we're going to have some major problems, so, and then this morning, we read that the school board says all the school kids have to wear masks, so it's a pretty-
That's right, yeah, we did say that, yeah.
It's not, it can get confusing, can't it?
It certainly can, it certainly can, you know, the common sense aspect of it is, is that if you don't know what the real situation's going to be, if it's indoors, it's a reception, it could get crowded. Wear a mask, you'll probably be eating hors d'oeuvres, at least I hope you are, and drinking cool lemonade, and I hope you're doing that too. Yeah, take your drink, take your sip, bring the mask down, sit down, talk, and put the mask back up. That's kind of the way I would handle it now for a while. We're going to get more data on what asymptomatic infected people really mean, there's a lot of debate in the media right now about that, I'd rather see the data myself rather than take media suggestions, but I think until all that's sorted out, but where's the mask?
Has the hospital population-
And plus all the exaggeration from the retirement.
Has the hospital population at North Carolina Baptist Hospital increased this week?
Oh, yeah, 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 it has, I mean, the overall population, maybe some, a little bit. I mean, summer's usually a quieter time for us anyway, besides trauma. But yeah, our COVID's gone up considerably in the past three weeks. Again, and I can tell you, the people admitted at the hospital that I've counted in the last three weeks, 100% of them have not been vaccinated.
Only, only.
Yeah, and throughout the whole entire pandemic, for our ICUs, 100% unvaccinated. And the population has shifted, it's much younger. It's not uncommon now to see a late 20 or 30-year-old in the ICU. And that really is, I mean, not that I want to see anyone in the ICU, but it's tough when they're young.
Commissioners, are further questions or comments on Dr. Oll's report? If not, Dr. Oll from Baptist Hospital, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us.
You guys all have a great weekend, enjoy it.
We sure will, thank you, sir. Now, we're going to go back to the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the zoning petition for Kimberly Gardner, zoning docket number 1603, and it's Item Number 1 on the agenda for today's program. First speaker for this hearing will be Chris Murphy of the Planning and Development Services Department. Mr. Murphy, if you could review this entire operation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a petition of Kimberly Gardner, it's case F1603. The site is a one-acre parcel located on the northeast side of Bowman Road, north of Tynne Hall Road, and this is a request to rezone the property from general use AG to general use RS20. This is the subject property shown on the Forsyth County Growth Management Area Plan. The property is located within the rural area, GMA 5 area. This is the location map, the subject property highlighted in yellow there on the northeast side of Bowman Road. This is the property highlighted on the aerial imagery, the property highlighted in yellow. There are two manufactured homes located on this piece of property, both approved through the Board of Adjustment. This is looking at the site from Bowman Road, you'll see the manufactured homes that are placed on the property. This is looking across Bowman Road from the subject property. In summary, there are two homes that are located on the subject property, and both have existed for approximately 20 years or more. The second home was approved as a secondary dwelling, special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. This proposal, if adopted by the Commissioners, would allow the parcel to be subdivided, and each home placed on its own respective lot. This item was heard by the Planning Board at their June 10, 2021, public hearing. There was one speaker in support, there were no speakers in opposition. The Planning Board voted unanimously that the request was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but did recommend 7 to 2 for approval of the rezoning request. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions on Chris Murphy's report? Thank you, Chris. This is a public hearing, speakers will have 15 minutes, up to 15 minutes, to speak in favor of the request, and up to 15 minutes to speak in opposition to the request. Is there anyone in this room wishing to speak in favor of the request? If you want to speak in favor of it, please come right up. You can come up here, glad to see you, you're wearing a mask too, you're right in keeping with what the doctor just said a moment ago.
I'm Kimberly Gardner, and I'm just, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak or not, but yeah, I was petitioning.
Would you do me a little favor, I know that mask is exactly what we just said you got to wear, but it's hard to understand you.
Okay, yes.
If you can get closer to the microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you.
I thought my big mouth would do it. I am Kimberly Gardner, and I'm petitioning a yes to subdivide the property. When I bought the home 20 years ago, I lived in one home, and my grandmother lived in the other. She has since passed away, and my family dynamics have changed, and I actually don't live there. My cousin lives in one, and I want to divide and sell the original home because it's just sitting there. So that's, that's it.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
You may put your mask back on now, if you want to.
Thanks.
All right, do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? If not, then I will declare this public hearing closed, do I hear a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamene.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just for the official part, I'd like to move that the zoning map amendment F1603 be approved on the basis of the following. This is a proposed general use zoning map amendment as petitioned by Kimberly L. Gardner to rezone a one-acre piece of property from AG RS20 residential-
Is there anyone in this room wishing to speak in favor of the request? If you are, if you want to speak in favor of it, please come right up. You can come up here. Glad to see you. You're wearing a mask, too. You're right in, in keeping with what the doctor just said a moment ago.
I'm Kimberly Gardner, and I'm just, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak or not, but yeah, I was, uh, petitioning.
Would you do me a, a little favor? I know that mask is exactly what we just said you got to wear, but it's hard to understand you.
Okay, yes.
If you can get closer to the microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you.
I thought my big mouth would do it. I am Kimberly Gardner, and I'm petitioning a yes to subdivide the property. Um, when I bought the home 20 years ago, I lived in one home and my grandmother lived in the other. She has since passed away, and my family dynamics have changed, and I actually don't live there. My cousin lives in one, and I want to divide and sell the original home because it's just sitting there. So that's, that's it.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
You may put your mask back on now if you want to.
Thanks.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? If not, then I will declare this public hearing closed. Do I hear a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamene.
Well, that, Mr. Chairman-
Yes.
Just for the official part, I'd like to move that the zoning map amendment F-1603 be approved on the basis of the following. Um, this is a proposed general use zoning map amendment as petitioned by Kimberly L. Gardner to rezone a one-acre piece of property from AG RS20, residential single-family, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, um, which is inconsistent with the recommendations of the legacy comprehensive plan, but is reasonable or in the public best interest because, one, the subject property at 6439 Bowman Road currently has two manufactured homes on a one-acre lot, one of which has been permitted as an accessory use, and the other for more than 20 years. Each home has a separate septic system, and the property is adjacent to land zone AG, with adjacent uses being agriculture and large lot residential. RS20, two, RS20 zoning is intended for single-family detached dwellings in suburban areas in Growth Management Areas 2, 3, and 4. Three, the subject property is not adjacent to properties with similar zoning as that proposed. Four, the subject property is located in Growth Management Area 5, rural area, which is inconsistent with RS20 zoning. However, the proposed RS20 zoning is consistent with the present use of the property that has been in place for more than 20 years, and the rezoning will not allow more intensive development of the site and will have no effect on traffic. And five, the proposal is deemed an amendment to the legacy comprehensive plan.
And the motion made by Vice Chairman Don Martin, seconded by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes for the meeting of June 24th, 2021. Motion and a second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ashley Sloop, it's time for you to star in the meeting here. Do we have any calls or cards for the public session, and which will you start with?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any callers.
All right.
However, we do have six cards.
Good. Who would be the first one?
Alan Daniel, please come forward.
Here comes Alan Daniel. If you would, please, sir, just give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Alan Daniel. I live at 100 Fernworth Court in Clemens. Um, would like to, uh, first of all, request, uh, respectfully from all of the taxpayers of Forsyth County, that in the future, when we have a bond referendum, that we have more detail than we had on the one, uh, which several of us are here to oppose, the building of the event center at Tanglewood. I can almost guarantee you that the va, well, the majority of Clemens would not have voted for the bond referendum on Parks and Recreation had we known that what was to be, what was being proposed was going to be plopped in the middle of Tanglewood. Um, I have also included a, or got with me, and I don't know if Ms. Sloop has been able to, okay, there's a flood map. Uh, is there a way I can just show it on this?
There is a way. Let's see who's got the, who can, help you.
Here we go.
Okay.
Okay, so that flood map shows in blue the areas that flood Clemens West, which is the red line that runs vertically divides Clemens West from Tanglewood Park. Maidstone Lane, uh, dead ends into Tanglewood Park. That flood map is not really worth the paper it was printed on anymore because subsequently the area that is in blue to the right is, runs through Clemens West, runs into Johnson's Creek, which then runs through Tanglewood Park. All of that area floods multiple times a year. To put an event center in the area that is proposed would only exacerbate that flooding. While the problem with the flooding is not what's going on now, it's like if you've got a bucket full of water, it doesn't really matter where the water came from. If you put more in it, it's going to overflow. And lastly, I would like to request that, as Mr. Watts said last night, if you insist on doing this, the county owns a piece of property across Idles Road from Tanglewood Park that might be an alternative that could maybe be included into the park. Still wouldn't require the county to expend money to buy additional property. It would require some infrastructure improvement to be able to allow horse trailers and that sort of thing in, but just a, an option.
You have one minute.
Okay? Thank you very much.
You still have one minute.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Each speaker now will have three minutes. I'm keeping the time up here. Mrs. Sloop?
Our next speaker is Ann Gould.
Ann Gould. I can see movement, and here she comes. Mrs. Gould, good to have you with us. If you feel more comfortable taking the mask down while you speak, it would be easier to hear you.
Thank you. I can actually breathe now. Um, I want to thank-
Oh, you, you need to identify yourself for the record.
All right. I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
My name is Ann Gould, G-O-U-L-D. I live in Davie County in Moxville. Do you need the full address?
That's true.
I can give it to you. Okay, I want to thank, thank you, board members, for giving me a chance to speak today. I am one of several people who is troubled about the impact this project will have on Tanglewood Park. My primary concerns are the health and safety of my two horses, the destruction of wildlife habitats, Tanglewood's infrastructure, and the lack of logistical planning in running an event center such as this. I've had horses at Tanglewood for over 30, 20 years, and I chose Tanglewood not only because of the exemplary care that they receive, but because the park offers a sanctuary away from the noise and the busyness of life. It's serene, and it's safe to ride there. If I had wanted my horses where there was an indoor arena, I could easily have chosen a different boarding situation. I'm very worried about my safety in riding at the park in the midst of construction and after it is built. The pasture flooding situation is an ongoing issue. Johnson Creek often floods, and the horses lose needed pasture and grazing land. I'm counting 48 horses living out there now. We have four pastures to rotate all of those horses through when the, when their other pasture land is completely flooded. So you're talking about taking away two of our four pastures. The roads, I know you have talked about traffic being kept off the main road, but then you would reroute it up a road through the campground, and that would create more noise for campers who are paying to have their trailer there and the houses behind the park. The congestion of event traffic would delay emergency vehicles getting into the park, as well as our veterinarians getting to our horses if one of them is ill or injured. In a past meeting, you were unable to answer how animal manure would be removed or even maintained at the park. Indeed, you stated that other centers you looked at lost money because of having to pay for companies to come and remove the manure. With 200 stalls, I will tell you, that is a lot of manure.
You have one minute.
Speaking of animals, each one's health certificate would have to be checked for every event. You mentioned you would not hire extra staff. Who is going to do that? I'm really uncomfortable right now with outside riders coming in to use our rings. Right now, we don't allow it. That's an amenity that we horseboarders are paying a lot of money for. I have grave concerns about this project and respectfully request that you do not bring it to Tanglewood Park. Perhaps you could use the $5 million to put in playground structures for those in wheelchairs, or to implement programs for our aging populations, or continue to renovate inner, inner-city recreational centers to provide equitable access to green spaces for all of Forsyth County residents.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. I got it within three minutes. I appreciate your time.
You did a good job. Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Sloop?
Sherry Sandy.
Sherry Sandy. What a pretty name. Just give us your name and address, please.
I'm Sherry Sandy, 3450 Tanglebrook Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and listen, and letting us speak. Um, my biggest concern is this, um, we were talking last night after the meeting, six, three other couples got together, and we discussed it, and we know there are some people who are interested in this. But with the people that I've spoken with, are these people people that go there, or do they have an interest because they have a financial gain? People that are going to be in the construction business? People that are going to have venues there that are going to make money financially? Who are you working for? The people who love and enjoy this place, or people who are wanting to have money made from this event? Because I've spoken to a lot of people, and I personally have not spoken to one person who likes this. We went out to eat, as I said last night after this meeting, at Applebee's, there was a bar full of people. They were overhearing our conversation, and I could see them leaning in. I stood up and I explained what was going on. Speaking in front of people is not my normal thing. But I, I told them what happened and what's going on in their community, and they, they had no idea what was going on, and they also did not want it. I mean, they were like, we don't want any more traffic in Clemens. They were not happy. They didn't know me from Adam. They wrote their name on paper and said, send me that petition. And I sent them that this morning, and I got a, just now, got a message back, and it said, thanks to you, I've told other, I have told others about the petition, so hopefully we can prevent it from being built. These are strangers. I'm approaching people, I have no idea who they are, but if they're in Clemens, I assume maybe they've been to Tanglewood at one time or another. It's a beautiful park. Don't destroy the wildlife. Don't destroy people's happy place. Secondly, my biggest concern is I spoke with, I mean, I've been talking nonstop to people. I spoke with somebody today and said, you know, this is important, be at the meeting August 4th, be at the meeting. We need people, we need people to prove that we do not want this park. And because he was quoted in the paper, Mr. Watts was quoted in the paper, they think it's a done deal, we're not, we, the P, like, it was kind of, I'm not going to quote him.
You have one minute.
Basically, it was, we could see you people don't want it, we won't have it. Well, that's what that newspaper article kind of said. So they thought it's a done deal. I'm like, no, it's not a done deal. So I'm afraid people who kind of read the paper feel like it is a done deal, and they're not going to show up. They think that it's not going to happen. They think that the park is safe, going, that this is going to move, be moved elsewhere. That is a huge concern to me, that now, being quoted in the paper, people are not going to show up thinking that we're not, that you guys have moved the event center elsewhere. So that is a concern to me. So, thank you very much.
We're delighted you came in.
Kim Ellis Gardner.
Kim Ellis Gardner.
Mr. Chairman, I believe she was the lady who spoke.
And she left. Okay. We'll move forward.
And our last speaker card, um, does not have a name on it, but it's for Holland Homes. Please come forward.
There is some movement. Here we go. If you'd come forward, sir, and give us your name and address for the record, it'd be very helpful.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for allowing me, but I'm here on behalf of Holland Homes. We've been here before, as you know. This is in regard to item number 32, I believe.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What's your name and your address?
Jasper Brown.
And what's your address?
3110 Briar Cliff, Western Salem, 27106.
Got it.
Okay. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to come back. Mr. Heims, Jesse Heims, is the chairman of our board at Holland Homes, which is on, on the Holland Avenue. Holland Homes has been in existence for well over 40 years, close to 50 years, providing nonprofit, um, excuse me, providing housing, low-income housing, for elderly and veterans. Uh, I don't need to rein, I don't need to go back over what Mr. Heims said to you, but just to reiterate, we have 114 units. This, these units are provided for elderly and for veterans. We've been in the East Western area for a number of years. We've, we have clean, affordable housing. I think several of you, several of the commissioners have been over to see our units, and I'm simply here to reiterate our request to purchase those properties, to, um, to make that point more, uh, to bring it home. I want to, if I may approach you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please do.
I want to, I want to make a, uh, an upset bid, as you, as it's referred to.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir, that's fine.
And, um-
Thank you very much.
-to, uh, to purchase the property. My understanding that the, um, the outstanding bid, the high bid at this point is $126,000, $25,000, we're making a bid of $126,000, and we're prepared to, to do whatever is necessary to secure the property so that we can provide affordable housing for elderly people and for veterans. As you know, that is a sore need in East Winston, as it is in our city. Um, are there any questions?
Uh, any questions, Mr. Brown? Now, we, you have about one minute left, so you have one minute to make that earnest plea.
Well, if there are not any questions, I simply want to say that I've been a resident of Winston for well over 40 years. I'm a South Carolina boy.
Oh, that's, sorry, but that's okay.
I can't help it. But I've made a good life here in Winston. I worked for the Labor Board for 40 years.
Oh, wow.
Throughout the Carolinas. Uh, I've raised my children here. Uh, I've, uh, I've had a good life in Western Salem, and I'm doing this as the other board members are, simply to allow other people who are less fortunate than myself to have a safe, affordable place to live in their elderly lives. And I ask that the commission take that in consideration. We may want a lot of things, but we need housing, all of us.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right.
Now, we will continue with the public session. We're, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kaplan.
While we're here, could Gordon explain the procedure on how this is done so that, uh, Mr. Heims would, would be informed of that?
So, um, this, this is, would not technically be an upset bid because we haven't started that process yet. Um, it, it's up to the board to decide, and I believe you have an item on your agenda later on, whether you will accept a bid, and that bid that you accept would be put out, uh, would be published in the paper, and there would be an opportunity for an upset bid, which would have to be a little bit more than 5% beyond what the published bid was. So, so this, the board can take this for what it's will. This, this is an offer that was made outside of the offer, original offer period that you all had designated. Um, but it, but it's up to your discretion as how to treat this. If you did go forward with this, this is a little bit different language than what we have in, in option A, um, in your agenda item. Option A says low-income and veteran housing. This says affordable housing for seniors and veterans. So affordable may mean low income, but that doesn't say that. So I'm, I don't know how to treat that, but this is not technically an upset bid, according to the law.
Further questions? If not, we're still in a public hearing. Uh, to make sure that I'm not going the wrong way again, Ashley Sloop. We don't have any phone calls, is that correct?
No, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any phone calls. However, I skipped over a speaker card.
Oh, my goodness.
And her name is Kathleen Thornett. Please come forward.
Oh, that's good.
Some further questions from the, Mr. Chairman?
Um, well, you, you ran out of your, I'm sorry, you ran out of your time, sir, but you can talk to us as soon as this, this meeting is over.
Well, I'm saying in light of what was just said, if there are any further questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right, I'll, does anybody have any questions for him right now? Not, none right now, but we, don't go away. Now, Ms. Kathleen, your name has been called. You have three minutes. I'm glad you're here, and if you will give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Kathleen Thornett. I live at 509 Howard Town Circle, Moxville, North Carolina. I'm a Davie County resident. I live about seven minutes away from Tanglewood Park. I have been privileged to use the park for over 30 years that I've lived- I have been privileged to use the park for over 30 years that I've lived where I live now. And I just am here, this is totally out of character for me. I'm here to state my opposition to this plan for the event center. Um, I, I can't tell you how much the park means to me, how much the horses mean to me. I am a member of the equestrian community there, although I do not own a horse. I am the resident barn bum and you can ask any of the horse owners.
I've never heard that phrase before.
Well, you've heard it now. You can ask any of them and they, they will tell you that it's true. I, I just cannot tell you how much that place means to me. And in its current incarnation, I feel that what, what is proposed is antithetical to the spirit of the park and to the intentions of the person who left that park to Forsyth County. And I, I do hope that you will, will take into account all of the opposition to it and the folks that are, are spending their time coming to meetings and who feel very strongly about this. I'm out there several days a week and there's, there's community outreach that goes on. I can't tell you how many times, and this was back, well, in the last year, the number of people who are in that park trying to do something because they couldn't do anything for the last year, couldn't go anywhere. And they came out there, there was community outreach. Oh, we bring little Johnny and little Susie out here every day. They love the horses. They, they, you know, they just want to come every day and we talk to them and we educate them. And we encourage them, you know, because at least they're learning about something and taking care of something before themselves. Please, please reconsider this situation. It, it just is not right for Tangalwood Park. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming. We were hoping that you would. And all those who came to speak, um, this is very valuable to the commissioners. And I can assure you that, uh, what has been said will be discussed and it will be acted upon. I don't think we'll probably get it done tomorrow. Probably closer to, uh, the first part of October. If that's the case, I think that's the end of our telephone calls and that's also the end of our public session. And, uh, if you'd like to speak again, we'll be back with another vote here in about two weeks. Uh, Mr. Manager, if you're still around, there you go. Would you continue with the agenda?
I will. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these through our regular cycle, uh, introducing them at one Thursday briefing, uh, finalizing the agenda the next, and then voting them on the third, uh, Thursday after that. And so, uh, hopefully we've answered any questions that may have arisen. I'll go ahead and dive into the agenda. Agenda item four is an amendment to the pandemic response special revenue fund to appropriate grant funding for emergency rental assistance. That's some of the federal money that's coming through. Uh, it's $3,206,299.60 to add to the funding that's already there for rent, rental, rent, rental readers, utilities, energy costs and other expense cost.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, agenda item five is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance. It reflects behavioral health application to cross nor communities for children. Uh, it's $181,053. It is those maintenance of effort funds. Um, and this will fund trauma-focused therapy, support and training, uh, through cross nor.
Comments or questions?
With approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, agenda item six is adoption of the 2022 housing grant projects ordinance. We set that up after the budget year each year. Uh, this year, that, uh, that fund will have $452,590 in it. And it, that, those are essentially the programs for the, um, the home programs that we operate in conjunction with the city and the urgent repair programs that we operate.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item seven has two parts. It's an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance appropriates committed fund balance and transfers, uh, to the 2020 pay-go capital projects ordinance. Uh, you've got an associated amendment that, um, to the 2020 pay-go capital projects ordinance that accepts that transfer from the general fund for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Maintenance Co-location. This is the 1.2, it's, it's what's left of the 1.5 million originally set aside, uh, to match, um, grant projects at the airport. When we sold the Lansing Drive property, that generated, um, some funds, uh, that we've, we've accrued to the airport because that was essential and necessary. Um, with there is 1.2 million that was left in that that we're transferring to help offset the costs that were going to occur in moving, uh, the maintenance operation there.
Comments or questions?
With approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item eight is a resolution authorizing a request for and acceptance of additional loan funds from the Clean, Clean Water Management, Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund under the Division of Water Quality in North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources. It's an amount of $447,300 to fund the Idles Road Regional Pump Station.
Comments or questions?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item nine is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance that appropriates additional fund balance from Triangle Fire Tax District. The, that old tax district does not exist anymore. It's now served by Beeson's, Union Cross and Gumtree. And this essentially takes those dollars and, and allocates it to those departments.
Comments or questions? Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richard Linville. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item 10 is an amendment to the 2021 budget ordinance to increase revenues and appropriations for Forsyth County Department of Public Health for epidemiologists, uh, public health preparedness and response branch from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's for $12,326 and this is for COVID-related needs.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item 11 is an amendment to the 2021, 22 budget ordinance to increase revenues and appropriations for the South County Department of Public Health for the Women's and Children's Health Section Immunization Branch. It is for $75,000 and it is for equity and access to COVID vaccines.
Comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item 12 is a resolution approving the community-based juvenile delinquency, substance abuse and gang prevention plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 and authorizing its submission for state approval and implementation. Um, you have 13, um, uh, uses of those funds. It totals about $940,852. There was some discussion about hearing from some of those program, uh, programs. And so we are in the process of trying to set that up, it's kind of through the year. And so we will, uh, do that and that'll be part of our briefing agendas as we move forward.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we got some grants. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to apply for and receive U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistances, or JAG funds. You've got an associated, uh, associated resolution ratifying and authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the city of Winston-Salem regarding the shared use of these funds. The total amount's $237,492. The county portion of that's $118,746. And the sheriff has indicated he's going to use these for the Arctic program.
Commissioners. Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming L. Amin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, we got a number of contracts. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to an agreement for elevator and escalator maintenance services. The big picture is we dropped off the old sheriff's building because it's gone. Uh, we increased it for the parking debt that we constructed and the new annual cost is $254,508.
Comments or questions? Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, we've got two roof projects, item 15 and item 16. You probably can take them together. Item 15 is resolution awarding a contract for the Annex One Roof. That's at the Behavioral Health Complex. Uh, that's with Bar Roofing. Both were competitively bid. Bar was the successful bidder at $380,000. For item 16, Triad Roofing was the successful bidder at $459,000. Maybe take them both together.
Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioners Fleming and Don Martin and Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, item 17 is resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Health Sciences for medical direction services for emergency medical services or the ambulance system. Uh, we did talk to both hospital systems. Um, Wake Forest did, uh, did offer us a good renewal at $89,000 for the services of medical direction. That's it.
Comments or questions? Motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. Second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item 18 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Information Inc. to provide hosting and maintenance services for the I-reception application. It's not to exceed $63,000.
Comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, you have several property matters. Item 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the Wells Center Incorporated for the Women in Transition Program. And they, she is going to lease the county-owned property located at 725 North Highland Avenue. It is 1,294 square feet. Annual lease payment is $12,435.34.
Comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, item 20 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an assignment of a hangar lease at Smith &amp; Earl's Airport from Truist Bank to Mount Arrow Properties Incorporated.
Comments?
Motion. With approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin. Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 21 is a resolution authorizing the reservation of a negative easement for Forsyth County across a portion of property located at 1941 Union Cross Road. This supports the Trosa development that's underway there.
Comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt. Second by, Richard.
Second.
Richard Linville. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, item 22 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the town of Walker Town for use of premises, um, for the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department. And we were waiting on, uh, some information, uh, that we've been working over the last two weeks. So if I could ask Kirby to come up, wherever you are. He's going to do a quick presentation on, uh, really options. As you know, we operate a substation there, uh, at, um, at that facility that's owned by the town of Walker Town. They, um, they were pretty adamant about, um, uh, about a provision that, that, uh, that our attorney really was not, uh, not okay with. They were not, um, willing to change any of that language at all. And so, um, we had been looking at other properties where that substation could be located. And we are fairly fortunate, um, folks in general services have done a good job. And they, they have a very viable, uh, option. Uh, it's just going to be a matter of, of, of getting in that space.
Which gives us the opportunity to hear.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, to hear the golden voice of Kirby taking.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. And I'll, uh, briefly run through our assessment and a couple of options for your consideration. Just at, at the outset, let me profile our existing space in Walker Town. And this is sort of what we've looked at to try to recreate elsewhere. We're dealing with roughly 300 square feet of office space. There's two desks. Uh, they're used by two to four deputies. There's two, again, two computer terminals. There is a server space, uh, storage of spare tires, restroom, and there's a small client meeting space and a break area. So framing as option one, the old Walker Town gym, we talked a little bit about that, um, I guess a couple of weeks ago now. Uh, again, that's located off of Ruxton Drive in Walker Town, built in 1960. It's about 15,000 square feet as a whole, but it's got a big gym on top and a lower level on the bottom where our workspace would be. That lower level's about 5,000 square feet. It's zoned appropriately for our use. At a high level, in order to outfit that space at a basic level, um, staff estimates it would cost us about $50,000 and an implementation timeline of at least three months. Uh, there is an impact for future operating costs because again, we would assume all OpEx of that facilities. We'd be paying the power bill, all the maintenance out there if we were to lease it from the school system. Uh, there are significant unknowns with that facility. And I'll talk a little bit about that in, uh, and actually in the next slide. Uh, this is a kind of a drilled down look at what it would cost us to outfit that area. Again, as a layout, you've got a large gym on the upper floor, um, office area, two office areas, a workout room, laundry and shower facilities on the lower level. So as long as we use that space as currently set up, there's nothing we need to do with the layout. There, as we talked about, there's no, um, HVAC cooling to the, uh, to, to the facility. And there's minimal electric heat to the lower level. There's gas heat to the gym area. That's where your major expenditure would come in. We estimate it would cost about $40,000, but a heat pump down to the lower level to get us some, some hot and cold air down there. Uh, in terms of electrical, we need to replace some fixtures, convert those to energy efficient LED lighting. It is a little dark down there, so to make it workspace, we need to upgrade some, upgrade some lighting. Couldn't find the water heater. We're pretty sure there is one that's just off. In terms of life safety, no substantial, uh, changes really are needed.
Did I just hear you say you couldn't find the water heater?
Well, folks that are smarter than me couldn't find it. Uh, we think it's there. Uh, no substantial changes really to life safety, so long as we're using the space as it's set up now. Uh, the roof, we're looking at a full replacement within, maybe within 10 years, certainly at the end of 10 years. That thing's probably going to need to be replaced. Uh, the membrane is starting to pull away at the flashing and the seams. And that's telling you that it's starting to contract and there's a replacement that's going to be imminent at some point in the future. And then general maintenance, depending on our usage of the space, really minor repairs. You know, painting, a little carpet, something to make it look nice and like an office area. So again, a total of about $50,000. The big unknown there is, uh, is really related to code. So if we got the sheriff in there and let's say, uh, just as a, you know, an example, if you wanted to put, uh, a desk in the shower, right? Uh, because you would need maybe an office area there, well, that might say, hey, that's changing the use of the space and would trigger a code review of the facility. What that would end up meaning for us is unknown. Really unknown for the budget, unknown for the timeline. Uh, it's just, we just don't know because we haven't programmed out that space with the sheriff's office yet. So in the midst of our assessment, uh, and I think the suggestion came from the board, uh, to look at the Walker Town Library. And we said we want to offer that as a second option for your consideration. So not, the library itself is, would remain sort of as it is now. There's a mechanical room on the backside of the library. And I'll show you what that looks like on a floor plan in a second. Um, that is part of the library, but it's not. It's not access from the library. It has its own door. It meets our space threshold, it's about 340 square feet. It's close to staff restrooms. It has adequate storage and parking at the facility. We own it, which is always a positive. Uh, staff feels like we can outfit that space relatively quickly. Um, again, it is, uh, you know, it's shell space really right now. So it would take kind of a split system HVAC unit to go in there to give them some cold air. We want to put some carpet down and some paint to make it look like an office area. Uh, we think we can do that at about $10,000. Uh, that's probably on the high end. Uh, there's really a nominal impact to operating costs there because we're already paying for the facility. Uh, the, the good news is the sheriff's office toured the space and they really liked it. Uh, I think they saw it as a good use. I think they saw it as a good use. They thought their deputies could function well in that space, and there really is an added benefit of increased law enforcement presence at that facility that has experienced some issues lately. This is what that looks like. The top, or the left slide here, is a layout of the Walker Town Library in a hole, and here is the mechanical room in the back, and here's a drilled-down view of that. So here's the mechanical room that we would convert to sort of an office space right now. If you look at it, it's got some ductwork up above, and it's got some IT infrastructure on a wall. You put a drop ceiling in, and I think we can spruce it up, so it looks fairly nice. It's got its own door, so the sheriff's office would park sort of out here in what's already staff parking. They could go into their office area, they could pop out here, go directly into the library, and that goes right into the staff area of the library for, you know, facilities. So-
Ted, can you go back to that for a second?
Yes, sir.
So how do you get into the building?
So right here is the door of the mechanical room, and you come out, and there's an immediate door into the building right next to it.
So you have to go outside to go inside?
And we thought that actually would be a negative, but when we showed it to the sheriff's area or to the sheriff group, it seemed to be a positive, because it was sequestered in a way from the library property.
And a lot of their uses after hours as well, so.
Yeah, but if there's, there's no restroom, you have to, if the restroom access is inside the building, you gotta go inside the building night or whenever it is.
So there is a potential we can cut a door into this wall here. The issue is that's where the IT infrastructure is. What we could do is activate the space fairly quickly and then look to sort of massage that area, maybe move some of the data wiring over, put a door in if we can. The sheriff's office, again, looking at it, did not see that as a tremendous impediment, I think, to their operations.
And the only other question, just where are the air handling units and where is the, you know, the, I'm sure it has some kind of boiler for the heat part that could tie into it, unless it's, I can't imagine the thing is totally heat pump-driven. I mean, where is the real mechanical room if this is not it?
Yeah, I could certainly get you some more information on that from my, when I went in there, there's a little water heater there, there's some of the air handling.
Oh, there is a water heater?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so there's a few things in there.
We found this water heater.
I got the IT stuff, I got, you got some things, but having ductwork, you have to have something to connect it to.
I understand, yes, sir.
I think they're outside units.
Yeah.
Everything is outside.
It's air handled, everything outside.
I'm surprised.
Or on the roof, one.
Or on the, they got the chiller mount, I got stuff on the roof. Commissioner Kaplan.
You could put a door between the break room and the mechanic's room, access to the-
That's certainly possible. We could look at that, sir. We didn't get into quite that level of detail yet, but we would certainly look at that.
And I assume you want to keep the deputies out of the library during times that it's closed.
I think the library would probably be in favor of that, and probably the sheriff's office would be as well.
Well, it looks like there's no access, for example, the large restrooms are not accessible at all from this space. In fact, I don't see a door-
The staff bathroom is right here.
Okay, I see, and so the door up at the top, and that always goes into the library proper.
That's right. This is public, and this is the staff area.
I see it now. I see it from the big picture. I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy space to use. I mean, I think that's, that sounds good to me.
Yes, sir. Little bit of work, and most of that would be forced labor anyway, so we're keeping costs down there, which is, which is good.
What square footage on that space?
It's about three hundred and forty square feet, the mechanical room. So it's right where we kind of are working now.
Usable, usable three hundred square feet?
Depends. If we ended up putting some drywall up to sequester off the IT stuff and the water heater, it could decrease that a little bit, but we could program that out with them. Again, they didn't see a huge issue with that, I don't think.
And how many people would be in that room at one time?
Two, well, right now, two to four deputies use the space, but there's two staff work areas, so it sounds like they're rotating through as needed.
Yeah, it serves that response district, basically, and so.
We were just talking about a space with five thousand square feet to a space with three hundred, but if three hundred gets the job done, and we already own it, and it's heated and this, I'm all for it, I just, I just had a little different idea of the scope for this project, but that's good.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad it works.
Well, hopefully. So, you know, if the board did want to pursue the Walker Town Library option, again, the project budget would be around ten thousand, I think that's on the high side, I'm really thinking more like five. And implementation would be as soon as possible, two months, I think, is a little bit long. We feel like we could activate that fairly quickly. You know, in terms of impact to our current Walker Town space or where we are right now, and this is just purely from a real estate standpoint, you know, it may make sense to sign something in the form of a temporary agreement with the town in order to prevent moving the sheriff more than once. So I just kind of wanted to pose that out there. I really defer to the county attorney for legal guidance there, but.
Yeah, I'll just say I appreciate Kirby and the General Services folks for doing such a good job and finding a replacement. As the manager has indicated, there's some terms that Walker Town won't bend on, that we really would not normally agree to, but, you know, what I would say is that if you wanted to execute, say, a three-month lease, we could just, you know, swallow hard and execute it for three months, and by that time, the library space would be ready to go.
And you did say that the library staff there is happy. They think it's good to have that extra-
We have not engaged the actual library staff yet. My impression, just from my standpoint and looking at it, would be some additional law enforcement presence there could be helpful.
I would at least recommend speaking with them.
Yes, sir. I think this is something that we've jumped on fairly quickly in the last couple of days, so we're certainly still working out some of those things. I agree.
Yeah, Damon, if you talked to, we had talked about communicating with Brian around this.
So I mentioned this to them, I guess Mr. Kaplan brought it up a couple of weeks ago, and they didn't object.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, one of the, the fortunate part of this is, I think, both the library staff and the sheriff's office, it really is separate space. I mean, you know, you actually, except for needing to use that restroom, I mean, if you don't cut that door in, which they may, the sheriff's office may not want, because they wouldn't want, they may want to have that access restricted from inside the building, and being able to have a key to get into the library to use a restroom, you know, is most, that's not a huge issue. The other thing they get is they'll get the full set of services around janitorial and custodial and those kinds of things, which they don't have right now. So they've been cleaning their own space and what have you. So there are some real benefits to them, and my understanding from Major Elliott is that they feel really good about this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good.
Does it appear that this would be adequate size for foreseeable future?
That's a great question, sir. So from a square footage perspective, it does appear to be fairly similar to what we're operating out of right now. And then when we showed the sheriff's office the physical space, they seemed to agree with that. Whether there's growth in the future, I'm not sure, but for right now, it appears to work.
Well, did I not hear during the earlier discussion about the actual Walker Town facility that sometimes there are six, eight, or ten sheriff's vehicles there? I mean, and that is kind of that regional hub? So it's more than just two or three people at a time? I mean, there's got to be more people at sometimes if there are six or eight cars there. I just thought I heard that.
Yeah, they meet there for training purposes at times and for, you know, if they've got an event they are about to go to, they do meet there, and so, you know, you'll have that at this facility as well. I think the concern that I heard from the manager there in Walker Town was that you've got to park there, and you've got kids, you know, in the park, and so whenever they did that, you know, particularly when they, if they're doing a training event, there are certain things they've got to do in terms of with their weapons and what have you, even moving them to and from the car, and so they had received complaints about that. This is actually in the staff area behind the building at the library, and so I don't think we'll have, I don't think that will be a big issue there, because it is, the back parking lot where they did that is actually the front of their little town park right there, their city hall. And so I think you've got a different set of circumstances there.
We got an elementary school next door, but it is pretty far.
It's pretty far.
The library has meeting rooms.
Yes, sir.
Scheduled out there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think if the sheriff has seen this and approves it, surely he's thought of all these things, and I think it's a great idea, and I'm particularly pleased that we can accommodate Walker Town and get out of their building.
That's a good statement, yeah. That's a good idea, yeah.
I like the, and I won't spend a long time on it, I like the, the idea of the possibility of the use that was talked about of the old gym there, and if we don't use it now, hopefully they won't tear the thing down. I may, if I have time, put a fence around it myself and put no trespass, and I do not like to see things tore down and government just waste money. But nevertheless, I think that would serve for way into the future, possibly with some other things. I do agree, I think this is practical. It's less money as far as parking. I believe that there's most likely ample parking here. I don't know how many cars sometimes the sheriff's department might have there at one time, but there's, I don't know how many spaces there in the library parking lot. I'd just guess it's seventy-five to a hundred, I don't know what it is, but I don't think parking would be any problem with the library being open and when the sheriff had some training or need for extra number of cars there besides what normally is there. This seems to be a practical idea.
Okay, Kirby.
So I think what we need is, if it would, please, board, go ahead and approve the resolution ratifying the execution of this interlocal agreement, really just for a three, not to exceed three-month period.
Is that satisfactory with all the commissioners?
Do you think it'll take three months?
I do not, so hopefully we'll get out before then, but that'd give us ample time, I think.
I'm going to be sending an email right now and getting started.
Yeah, and that will, that will, if we don't, really the town said we need to be out now. They actually, the manager actually left me a message, said he was going to change locks on the door.
Well, who wants to make the motion on what the county manager just said?
Ted just did.
Ted Kaplan and Fleming Elamine, and second by Commissioner Don Martin. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Great job, Kirby.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thanks. All right, we've got some tax administration items. Item twenty-three is a resolution approving the Tax Collector's annual settlement for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty-one and prior years.
Comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioners Ted Kaplan and Fleming Elamine. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-four, you've got the Order of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with general statutes as listed there for the collection of twenty twenty and prior years taxes.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen-Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right, item twenty-five, you've got the Order of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with the general statutes as listed for the collection of the twenty twenty-one taxes.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richard Linville.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-six, you've got the resolution approving the refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of seven hundred and one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen-Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
You've got a number of reports. You've got the May-June Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report. You've got the Tax Assessor Collector Refunds under one hundred dollars. You've got the Human Resources Report for the month of April and May of twenty twenty-one, and then you've got the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Pay Plan Report.
Motion?
Move to receive reports.
Motion to receive the reports from Commissioner Richard Linville.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right, and then the last item, which was, or next-to-last item, item thirty-two, I'll ask Kirby to come up and introduce the two options you have regarding the Highland Avenue property.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon again. You'll recall at your January meeting, the board directed the manager to solicit fair market value offers for one-point-three acre of county-owned real property located at six fifty-one Highland Avenue. After a sixty-day offer period, the board received two offers, and we've tried to frame those in terms of options for your consideration today, and I'm going to attempt to use this thing and put them in front of you, and we'll sort of talk through them.
Looks good.
Oh, great. So in front of you, Commissioners, Option A, which represents the first offer, was received and made by GW Holland Housing Corporation. The offer was for one hundred thousand dollars, and that was at the time we received the offer. And in front of you, if you choose to advertise that for upset bid, the use restriction that would be on the property would be that the bidder must use the property in a manner consistent with the East End Master Plan for low-income and veteran housing. That's Option A. Option B, which is the second offer, was made by United Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and if the board decides to advertise that offer for upset bid, the bidder must use the property in a manner consistent with the East End Master Plan for low-income and veteran housing, open-air park or food market space or substantially similar uses. So that's framed as Option A and Option B. I'll quickly note a couple other things about the process, that should the board decide not to approve either Option A or Option B, staff will notify bidders that the county will not proceed with selling the property. And then there is a repurchase clause in both of the options. So in either Option A or Option B, if the buyer were to fail to complete construction and put the property to its declared use prior to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, the county may repurchase the property for the price the buyer paid, less than any cost to restore the property. Lastly, just an outlook at the future process, that the Board of Commissioners may, in your sole discretion, select any of the above options, and if the board chooses to advertise one of those options for upset bid, we will collect a five percent deposit prior to beginning the ten-day advertisement period, and the last and highest offer will come back to you for consideration. At that time, you could either accept or reject the offer. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Questions or comments?
Two questions.
Ted Kaplan.
Okay.
Is there anything that prohibits Holland Homes from participating with Metropolitan on the buildings that they oppose on the other side of that?
I, yeah, in the, I'm not sure how to answer that.
I don't think you can answer that, actually.
Okay. Yes, sir.
But it's a possibility that they could, and I assume that these entities could get together to provide low-income housing on blocks that were proposed by the East Winston Master Plan and Metropolitan. I'd throw that out there as a way to say that I think this could resolve the issue of low-income housing, and it could substantially keep that property available for the Holland Homes.
Fleming Elamine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question to our distinguished attorney, the document we just got from Holland Homes, could we accept this as an intent to participate in the upset bid process?
So, an upset bid, the statute that governs that is one sixty-eight dash two sixty-nine, and so what happens is whichever one you choose today, if you choose either A or B or some other option which would involve the sale of the property, that would be advertised, that amount would be advertised. So say you chose the hundred thousand, the hundred thousand would be advertised. As Kirby says, they would have to give us a five percent deposit. If anyone else wanted to submit an upset bid, they would have to increase that amount by, it's a little complicated because it's a state statute, but it's ten percent of the first thousand dollars and then five percent of the remainder. So, for example, if you based it off the hundred and twenty-five thousand, an upset bid would need to be one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred. So this is not an upset bid which has been submitted today. It's up to the discretion of the board if you want to set the amount as one hundred and twenty-six thousand or some other amount. The process that you had Kirby go through had a specific set time for people to submit bids, and that time has passed.
Additional comments?
One final question.
Yes, sir. Fleming Elamine.
One final question. Just a last minute question. So five percent of one twenty-five would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, so they would need to come in at least one hundred and thirty-one thousand two fifty if we accepted one twenty-five as the upset bid. I mean, that's a starting-
As I said, the statute says you have to have ten percent of the first thousand, so that adds fifty bucks.
Right.
That's why the upset bid amount is actually one hundred and thirty-one thousand three That's why the upset bid amount is actually 131,300.
Okay, I get 131,250. I forget the 10%. 131,300, all right. Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioner Don Martin.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. And it's, we'll piggyback on a comment I made last week. I had been interested, my interest in even considering this proposal at all was because I think we need more low-income housing, and clearly the Holland Homes had the capability of managing that with their, with a, the same current property manager could do both. But the, but I, I've tried to, in my own mind, I want to be fair on the upset bid issue process. And, and so I actually, I knew one of the folks from, I've actually had a separate conversation with someone from Holland Homes, and I also talked to someone involved with Metropolitan this week. And, and I, and I made the, I asked the kind of question that I was a little, you know, I was, I told them I was interested in the, in the low-income, the low-income veterans' housing, and if we weren't, if we weren't increasing that, I'm kind of not in favor of selling it. And why, and if they're not, you know, so what is their deal? And they said, well, he mentioned in their presentation, which I did not recall, was that, that if they were able to have that greens, they have to have green space in the projects they're planning across the street. There was Metropolitan's expansion, all the units they're doing, they have to have green space across the street. If they were able to own green space on idle 1.2 acres, they would build more low-income housing on the, on their regular project so that the net difference would be, I don't know what the numbers are, but would be more. And I guess a question that, because for me, it's about getting low-income, improving the low-income housing situation. And, and also being true to the fact that we, in good faith, put an upset bid process in place, and we had two bidders. So I'd like to ask the question, I'd like to get at least an answer to, from both Holland Homes and also from Metropolitan about, for Metropolitan, how many additional units can they construct over what they would do now? And I'd like for Holland Homes to make an estimate on the number of units that they can construct. And I know, I think our folks gave a rough estimate, maybe of number of units. I know you get, without knowing everything exactly, it's not all surveyed. But I'd like a pretty good estimate of the number of the increase in low-income housing and veterans' housing we would have from Holland Homes by doing this and that we would have from Metropolitan. I'd just probably, I'd be interested in knowing those two things before kind of making a decision. I think we've got to be fair. I mean, I feel like it has to be fair, and I think I'm interested in increasing low-income housing. And that's kind of where I am.
Basically, what you're looking for is more information. So are you making a motion to, to get to the heart of what you just discussed?
Yeah, I'd be hap, I'd be happy to move this to the next cycle. And maybe we could get, in the next two briefings, we would get our answer. You know, we'd really need the answer next week. If we get the answer at the briefing next week, we could do this at our next regular meeting.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Don, on the, on the motion. But maybe I could ask Jesse, is there, is there any opportunity for you to meet with the folks at Metropolitan to see if your two projects could work together?
Could you come forward and answer that question, sir?
Jesse, yeah.
Come forward, we can't hear you back there with a mask on, please. And you could speak without the mask if you want to.
That's Jasper instead of Jesse.
Jasper, it is Jasper.
I'm sorry, Jasper, I'm sorry.
There's two J words, that's the Jasper.
All right. This is Jasper Brown, I'm back again. If I may take off my mask just for a moment. With respect to working with United Metropolitan, their agent, I think it's Liberty, fellow named Mr. Norman, approached us. We, we spoke to him, allowed him to speak to us on two, two separate occasions. And what we found out was that he waited, we worked, we've worked on this matter for at least two years. Y'all have seen, seen me at least. And we were the only bidders until the last week of the bidding period, the absolute last week. He came, he met with us once, and then he came back a second time after he had put a bid in, which was greater than our, our bid. He didn't tell us this. I asked him during his meeting with us if he had made a bid for the property. He was, he was forthright at that time. He admitted that he made the bid. I said, what are you going to do with the property? He said, I'm going to, we're going to make a park. I said, of all the needs in East Winston, you're going to do a park? I said, we've been studying this for a long time. We've been working in this community for a long time. We need low-income housing. And while I'm on that point, let me say this. It's a matter of semantics whether you use affordable or low-income. I don't know your name, sir, but you raised a point, I'm referring to the county's attorney. And I took a quick look at the HUD guidelines. Affordable, low-income is encompassed in affordable housing under HUD guidelines, okay? If you want, I'll read it to you. Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable dwelling as one that a household can obtain, can obtain for 30% or less of its income. So by this definition, a dwelling considered affordable for low-income families, it costs less than 24% of the area median income. So HUD guidelines encompasses, it's another, it's a synonym for low-income housing. Nobody wants to say I'm building low-income housing, so they use affordable. So to answer Dr. Martin's question about how many units, we have checked with the city. On that lot, the city has told us we can put at least 50 units. We may have to go up, and we're prepared to do that, all right? We may, and there may be more, but we can do a minimum of 50 units. With respect to working with United Metropolitan in light of the conduct of Mr. Norman's group, I don't think that's realistic. We're, understand this, we're a separate entity. We're independent. We're independent of First Baptist, for that matter. We're, we're a nonprofit. We've been operating for almost 50 years. We've been operating affordable housing, low-income housing in East Winston for over almost 50 years. That's what we want with that, do with that property. We didn't come in here from out of town. We've been, we've been here. We want to do something for this community to provide low-income housing. And we got a track record. We're not somebody who came from Kansas or Charlotte or wherever. We've been here in Winston. Though I'm a South Carolinian, I feel like I'm an outsider. But I'm saying to you, people have, have relied upon us, and there is a need. That's the big thing. It seems to me that the county commissioners ought to respond to a need. Dr. Martin, you and I have known each other a long time, all right? We don't have any differences. I am stating this matter to you as straight as I can give it to you. I'll, I'll respond to any question you have, but as to those questions, you've got my answer.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
If Metropolitan can increase the number of homes or facilities that they want to build by using that land as a park, I assume there's some open space requirement for that part of town and zoning, that they could increase by a greater number than your entire project, would you be willing to work with them? Would your group be willing to work with them? And maybe even come up with a co-development agreement where you both share in the responsibilities and whatever profits there may be, rather than trying to do one against the other?
Let me say this, we don't have a problem working with United Metropolitan or anyone who wants to work with us in good faith.
Okay.
All right?
Fair enough.
And I'm not making any aspersions on, on United Metropolitan. But the individual who's working with United Metropolitan, that company, Mr. Norman, I think he's shown that he does not want to work with us in good faith. And that's the point here. I'm saying what the commission should do, rather than trying to give us another reason for not building this, give us, let us buy this property, you have to give it to us, let us buy this property, and we'll put some housing up. They are, they already have a plan. They already have their situation. We're independent of them.
And they already own their land.
And we want to stay independent of them. We're operating housing that people, clean housing, affordable housing, low-income housing for elderly people and veterans. We, we got a track record of doing that for over almost 50 years. We want to continue that.
I agree.
We don't need to use anybody else. We want to, we want to do our, our own project.
I agree, we visited, it's a beautiful facility, and you maintained it well. I agree.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Not a question, just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Fleming Elamine.
I discovered recently that United Metropolitan bought that land in 2016, and it's been five years for them to begin their project. So I have a lot of reservations about putting our faith into this development. I hope them well. I want to see them develop their project because it would be an asset to the housing stock in East Winston. But after five years, I'm just cautious, and I have more to say later on.
Let me say this, we are prepared to plan, to build. We have a track record of working with HUD. We renovated our properties in 2012, financed by HUD, all right? We've got on our board, and all of us are volunteers, by the way, we have a architectural planner on our board. We have the expertise, we have a management committee, a group, we have a connection with HUD. We feel like if we can just get this land, we can start putting some, some bricks in the ground and, and building. We don't wait another five years. And as you know, I personally have been putting forth the effort, and I'm, I'm retired now, but I feel like I got another job because I'm committed to it. And I think everybody on our board is committed to this. This is not something we, we just take as a business proposition. We want to see this part of Winston-Salem and the individuals in that age group and the veterans have a, a place that they can call home, that they are proud of, and that where they will be safe and grow. That's what we want, and we think everybody's entitled to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Commissioners, where do we want to go from here?
Well.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yeah, if I just may say, while Mr. Brown and the Holland Homes people are here, thank you for being here today. And I totally agree that we do need low-income, affordable housing for our seniors and for our veterans. I don't want us to lose sight in terms of what we're doing here because I think I spoke last week relative to the two offers that was on the table, and thank you for the enlightenment relative to the work, collaborative work that I thought may exist between Holland Homes and United Metropolitan. Being that said, if we are moving in the direction of the upset bid process, is, and that's what I think I'm hearing today, I want us and the Holland Homes and the United Metropolitan individuals to realize that an upset bid could be made outside of these two entities. And if that was to transpire, that we, as the county commissioners, still have a right to refusal. And I just wanted to put that in our forefront because it's in my mind.
Commissioner Kaplan. You have nothing. Do we have further comments?
I did have one other, I mentioned the one question for Metropolitan. The second question is, we, we also heard a strong plea for that, that this was, or at least the implication, that this, that if Metropolitan were successful, that that land would become a city park. And I'd like to, I'd like to know that if the city did not turn that into a city park, are they committed to maintaining it as a park and, and doing it? Because that was, that was a whole part of their presentation was the city's involvement.
That's right, sir. There were, there were two parts to their offer, as I recall. Their primary objective was to sell to the city that would then create a park. If that were not to come to fruition, there would be an open-air food hub on the property, and that's why in the property use restriction there, both are listed as a park or an open-air or a food market space. So in other words, both of their potential options within their offer are contemplated in, in option B.
So I think that's covered. So it's really, just the additional, I'm kind of interested in units. I'm interested in low-income housing growth is what I'm interested in. And I'd just like to know what number they have that they think would happen if they had that green space.
Yes, sir.
And so that would be a, my motion then is to, is to actually postpone for a week. All right, postpone until the next regular meeting, but get the information next week.
Which would be a couple of weeks away, right? Okay. Second, well, we have a motion on the table to delay this decision for two weeks, and Commissioner Kaplan had seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of Commissioner Martin's motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We delay for two weeks.
I want a point of privilege, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is a reference point. I know there's some thinking about our traditional way of doing business when it comes to, quote, surplus property. But just to remind us, sometimes traditions have to be challenged. I remember when 18-year-olds cannot vote in this country, no women, no child of slaves at that point. So I don't want us to be constrained to just be done traditionally. And I'll have further comments at our next meeting.
Good. Look forward to it. Additional comments?
All right. Last item on the agenda, after a closed session, discussion of the performance of the county managers, a resolution adjusting the compensation of county manager.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, county manager is now making $2,300,000 a year. $2 million, and you still have to go to Tanglewood next week.
Right, 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 right. That's all we have for the open session. We do have a number of items for the briefing session.
Mr. Kaplan? Mr. Kaplan moves that we adjourn. I'll second the motion. And by the way, before we leave here, just remember that the briefing session for the next meeting is coming up. Just to give you an idea of what we're going to talk about, we have an annual services advisory board recommendation and diversity and inclusion resolutions. All in favor, say aye. We'll be back in 10 minutes.